Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for October 16th, 2025. Will you stand as you're able and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me? Thank you. May I please get a roll call of the members?
Krista Hollab, here.
Christine Disney, here.
Danielle Gravy.
Present.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Susan Wood.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Ciara McKeonees.
Here.
And Anna Sparks is absent tonight.
Thank you. Next order of business will be the agenda. And if there are no errors or omissions in the agenda, they will stand approved. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next will be the meeting minutes dated September 4th, 2025. We've had them in our little packets. Would I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes from September 4th, 2025?
Thank you. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes made and seconded. Can we get a vote of the commission, please?
Motion approved, six to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. Now open the public general interest public forum. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on anything not on the agenda tonight? All right, anyone on Zoom?
I do have a couple on Zoom. If you wish to speak on anything other than what's on the agenda, can you please raise your hand? Nobody at this time.
All righty, I will close the general interest public forum and we'll move into a public hearing. Tonight, we have two agendas on there, or two items on the public hearing. And with that, I will ask Christine, will you introduce our first item for the public hearing?
Thank you, Chairman Quinn. WZ-24-11, an application filed by Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing for approval of a phase-specific development plan for a tree service business with the primary structure proposed in a later phase and located at 4877 Robb Street.
Thank you. Does staff have a presentation?
You do.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Stephanie Stevens and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number WZ-2411, which is a request for approval of a specific development plan for the purpose of developing a tree service business with the primary structure proposed in a later phase at 4877 Robb Street. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. Well, it was working for me earlier. Hang tight a sec. Try this one. Still not working. It was working.
Jeopardy music.
Please hold. Sorry.
Please hold. Oh. Technology's great until it doesn't work.
Thank you. Okay, Janet's gonna click for him. Ready for ya. Okay, here we go. The property is located on the west side of Robb Street, between I-70 Frontage Road North and approximately 50th Avenue. Property consists of two unplatted parcels, which are in the process of being combined into one lot. The property measures approximately 3.5 acres in size and is presently vacant, unimproved land. Both the Wadsworth and Swadley ditches run through the site with a significant grade change in the northwest corner, north of the Swadley ditch, approximately 30 feet of grade change. The Wadsworth ditch was recently piped underground in spring of 2023, and the Swadley ditch is expected to remain in an open channel. Excellent. The property is zoned planned commercial development. Properties to the north are zoned agricultural one. To the south is the Wheat Ridge Industrial Park, zoned planned industrial development. To the east, properties are zoned planned industrial development, planned commercial development, and agricultural one. And to the west, properties are zoned planned commercial development and industrial employment. Most of the surrounding uses are commercial and light industrial, although the three agricultural parcels to the north do contain single-unit homes. Rezoning to a planned development in the City of Wheat Ridge involves a two-step process. First step is the outlined development plan, which for this property was approved in 2022. Second step is approval of the specific development plan, which focuses on the specific details of the developments such as drainage, architecture, lot layout, building location, building orientation, and phasing. Purpose of this request is to allow for the phased development of a tree service business while preserving natural features that exist on-site today. And Planning Commission is the final deciding body on specific development plan approval. The SDP for this site was actually approved by Planning Commission in October of 2023 and is back for reapproval due to the request for phasing and specifically due to the applicant's desire to utilize the site for outdoor storage and operations without the presence of a primary structure in the interim. And the same SDP was approved prior with the exception of the proposed phasing. A full analysis of the previously approved SDP processed under case number WZ-2207 is included in your staff report. And the analysis tonight focuses on phasing aspects of the project only. Phasing plan can be found in the SDP on sheets nine and 10. Those are the two new sheets. All other sheets were previously reviewed and approved by Planning Commission. The applicant is proposing to complete the project in two phases and defer the building and full-site improvements to the later phase to give them time to come up with the funds needed to complete the improvements. They have committed to completing the first phase of improvements within two years, by December of 2027, and second phase of improvements within five years, by December of 2030. The purpose of utilizing planned development zoning is to provide flexibility while accommodating well-designed innovative developments that demonstrate efficient use of the land and may not be feasible under a standard zone district. The phased SDP achieves these goals by adding to the employment base in the area pursuant to the city plan, adding a compatible use to the predominantly industrial area, serving as a transition between the various land uses that surround it and promoting an efficient use of an infill site in keeping with the character of the area. The incremental phased approach provides flexibility needed to overcome financial barriers and also shows that the applicant is committed to meeting city requirements to ultimately achieve the objectives of the planned development. One more, please. Okay, so as a reminder, the ODP depicts the site broken up into three distinct planning areas shown on the screen, with most intensive along the southeast to least intensive to the northwest. The three planning areas with proposed uses are summarized as follows. Planning Area 1, located along Robb Street, will contain commercial uses. That will have the future building, the 5,040 square feet structure to accommodate office warehouse, woodworking, and retail uses, as well as the major improvements such as full parking and detention. Planning Area 2 is in the middle of the site between the two ditches and is the primary focus of what they're talking about doing with this first phase. It would be screened landscape material storage, nursery plantings and display. And Planning Area 3, located to the northwest, adjacent to the agricultural one property, is to preserve mostly in its natural state and in future phase would allow for additional outdoor storage in that area. So as noted, the tree service business that applied for the ODP is also the applicant for this SDP, and it is in allowed use. Initial uses include landscape material storage and outdoor uses associated with the applicant's tree service and firewood businesses, including the processing and storage of trees and wood. The retail side of the business will take place remotely in the interim phase. No clients will be entering or using the site initially. And the second phase would further include the building, additional outdoor storage, tree nursery, and display, and all of which were anticipated in the zoning ODP document. Uses in the initial phase are proposed to be accommodated primarily in the south portion of Planning Area 2 and screened by opaque fencing. One access point is proposed at the same location as the ultimate northern access point, proposed to be paved with employee parking at the front of the lot, leading to a gravel access drive and screening of the storage and processing area with additional employee parking in that rear side near the storage. And the initial improvements in Planning Area 1 of the ODP along Robb Street include paved access and parking, screened fencing along the perimeter, ADA accessible parking, the dumpster and trash enclosure, bike rack, interim landscaping and grading along with construction of majority of the public improvements, including curb gutter and sidewalk, street lighting, and the detention. The applicant is requesting to defer utility connections to the second phase because they are not needed absent the building. The rear portion of the property to the west, located in Planning Area 3, would remain as is for now. Interim landscaping includes installation of trees along the streetscape and adjacent to the single-unit home to the north, providing a buffer and limiting the visibility of the use from the street and adjacent residential property. The applicant proposes manual watering of the plants in the initial phase to establish the landscaping. The parking lot and operations would be screened by the fence, including a four-foot tall screen fence along Robb Street and six-foot tall screen fence along the north and south. Then there's an existing fence already on the west for the neighboring property. The storage area proposed in the first phase is located over 200 feet back from Robb and 100 feet, over 100 feet from the single-unit residence on the north side. And in the later phase, a majority of the fencing along the frontage would be removed and outdoor storage areas would be primarily screened by the building. Full detention is accommodated for in the initial phase. Ultimately, it would be located behind the building when that goes up. And again, the applicant is requesting to defer utility connections to the final phase. Staff is acceptable to this approach because building and fire codes do not trigger requirements for water and sewer service until the building is constructed. And here is the SDP showing Planning Area 1 along Robb Street at ultimate buildout, just to remind you what that looks like. So by 2030, it would include that office warehouse retail building oriented along Robb, two points of access, a full parking lot with 12 spaces, and then the gravel drives to the rear as is proposed today. And then the ultimate landscape plan, just to remind you what all is going in there. It will be additional shrubs and plantings to buffer things more fully against the sides once there's more intensive uses out there. And since Wheat Ridge is served by special districts, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive objections from outside agencies and coordination with these districts is ongoing. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a 1,000-foot radius. And the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. No comments were received in advance of the hearing. So staff finds that the phasing still achieves the ultimate goals and the SDP is consistent with the intent and purpose of the planned development. The SDP is consistent with the ODP zoning document and city code. All agencies can serve the property. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval with conditions as listed in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here for a brief presentation and then we're both here for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Would the applicant like to have a presentation, please?
Good evening. My name is CJ Kursk with Tahoe Consulting, 9457 South University Boulevard, Unit 101, Highlands Ranch, Colorado, H0126. I am here tonight representing the applicant, Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing. Rocky Mountain Hardwood Processing is a small local company. Company services tree removals and installations with a zero-waste philosophy. We're here tonight to propose phasing of the development obligations reflected in the specific development plan as Stephanie mentioned and noted as WZ-2207 that Planning Commission approved in October of 2023. The SDP that was approved included improvements to Robb Street along the property's frontage as well as the construction of a 5,040 square foot office warehouse building on the property. One of the conditions of approval included the completion of technical corrections on the SDP prior to recording. While this was occurring, the applicant requested the ability to phase the SDP improvements to assist with market condition changes since the SDP had been approved. As mentioned, there's two phases being proposed. The first phase proposes to construct all of the Robb Street improvements, items like curb gutter sidewalk, asphalt widening, storm sewer, and an onsite detention pond. In addition, Phase 1 will include a small asphalt parking lot on the property that will be built on the northern, at the northerly access into the site and gravel access drive to more parking spaces further into the lot. Tree lawn landscaping along Robb Street as well as fencing along the property's northeast and south property lines will be included with Phase 1 improvements. The purpose of the Phase 1 improvements is to allow the property owners to operate their tree businesses on-site until the office and workshop is built. The SIA Phase 1 Improvement Completion Date is October 31st of 2027 for Phase 1. I think you want to have this one. There you go. There you go. Actually, the next, there another one. There we go. The second phase will complete the balance of all the remaining SDP improvements that the Planning Commission approved in 2023. Mostly, most importantly, this will include the construction and completion of the office warehouse building. These are two elevation depictions of the office warehouse building. Side view. It will also include the associated parking and remaining landscaping. The Phase 2 improvement deadline for completion is December 31st of 2030. We appreciate your time tonight as well as the cooperation staff has provided. Allowing this phasing will ensure our ability to build out the plan effectively and successfully for available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kursk. I will now open this for a public comment. Do we have any public comment from the floor?
Not from the floor.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are two people on Zoom. If you wish to speak at this time, can you please raise your hand? Nobody.
Okay, hearing none, I will now close the public forum. And now I would entertain questions from the commission. Commissioner Disney?
No questions.
Oh. Commissioner Wood?
I do have one question about phasing. In the event, for instance, that the Phase 1 end date is missed, what happens? What's the process? I assume there probably is one.
Yeah, so we, number one, there is a subdivision improvement agreement associated with this that obligates them for the public improvements in these timelines. So we would have to open that back up. But also, we've added a condition of approval for Planning Commission that would require it to come back to you guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner Finnones?
No questions from me.
Mr. Gravy?
No questions.
Mr. Hollab?
No questions.
Oh boy. Commissioner Moore?
No questions.
Well, leads it to me. I have a couple. They're probably gonna be pointed towards you, Mr. Kursk. There was some question about noise from Commissioner Larson the first time we did this. And we have had a car wash go up and it, in, up like 44th and Harlan, and noise wasn't really talked about. And then all of a sudden, it's a big deal at that car wash because it's made a lot of people unhappy and uncomfortable. Is there, and with the building being in Phase 2, I assume that was gonna like screen some of the noise. What is gonna be the main function of it in this first plan, the business? And then is there a noise? Has anyone thought of noise? Noise pollution?
I'm gonna bring up one of the owners, Sean Infeld. He can talk a little bit about his equipment.
Sure. I just hate to see you get this far along and then we have an issue because it's kinda made me realize with the car wash that maybe we ought to ask a question.
But to date, there's been no discussion or comments about noise, but I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
My name is Sean Infeld. I'm one of the owners with Bill Telepol. We've been on the property for two years, actually running the firewood business and we do planting of trees. We have a small nursery there as well. And some of that is actually near Robb Street. And we had one comment, I think, because one of the chainsaws we used had a high-performance muffler on it. They came over and talked to us and that was the only issue we've had. So the building, dead in that beyond what it is to date. But in the last two years, we've been super conscientious about when we work there. We're not, neither one of us are there all that often. So it's not like this happens on a daily basis. But even when we're there on a daily basis, it's pretty minimal, the noise we make. So it's, I don't know what else to tell you other than we haven't had any issues to this point and we're pretty cognizant of it.
Great. Yeah, I just, main concern is, you know, you don't get this far along and then all of a sudden there's an issue and we can, we can address it.
We feel like we've kinda tested the waters pretty well. We actually met our neighbor to the north, the residential property. He said, if I have to come in and say, you know, you guys have been great, I'll come in and say that because he's had no issues either. So the industrial park to the south has said nothing. It was a neighbor across the street that has all glass windows and he was the one that was really sensitive about it. But he, it was one time, one time.
Perfect. And one other question that probably, well, it's gonna probably pertain more to you as the owner. I assume this is kinda like more storage for mulch and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Currently, yeah. Firewood is the big one right now. We haven't, we, mulch was a big plan of ours to get into mulch at some point. With tree companies generate a lot of mulch. But that has not transpired. The firewood end of it has transpired more than that. So that's the storage of firewood right now. Logs and firewood is primarily where we're at.
Great. Well, that kinda leads me to my final question on this. And without the building and the improvements with, it was like a fire plug or something, what? I know it's a sensitive word today. Do we have a plan for a potential fire in that area since you have the firewood? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, there's a fire hydrant right in front of our property.
Awesome. And I knew that. I don't know why I didn't remember it until you said that. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Appreciate it. Well, if there are no more questions, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Disney?
I move to approve case number WZ-2411, a request for approval of a specific development plan for a tree service business with the primary structure proposed in a later phase on property located at 4877 Robb Street for the following reasons. One, the specific development plan is consistent with the purpose of a planned development as stated in Section 26301 of the Code of Laws. Two, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Three, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Four, all responding agencies have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Five, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and the city's adopted design manuals with the following conditions. One, outdoor storage shall not be permitted within the drainage easement. Two, any development not shown on this SDP or any modification to this SDP shall require an amendment consistent with Section 26307 of the municipal code. Three, prior to commencing construction, civil construction drawings shall be approved and appropriate permits shall be obtained. Four, the associated subdivision plat, case number MS-2303, shall be recorded prior to recording of the subject SDP. Five, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement with the city to be recorded with the county clerk and recorder prior to issuance of building permits. Six, building permit submittals shall be consistent with the SDP. And finally, seven, any changes to- And finally, seven, any changes to phasing or deadline set forth herein shall require new application and reapproval before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Proper motion and second, can, is there any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a vote of the Commission, please?
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. And, and just for the record, I think it's really cool that, that the, the city and the business community can work together to, to help out in this situation rather than, you know, tell the gentleman, nope, you got to do it this way. I think that's, I think that's really good to show the cooperation. Appreciate it. Moving on to our next public hearing, which would be case number WZ 2502. Commissioner Woods, would you introduce that, please?
Yes, this is a request by Foothills Regional Housing for approval of a rezoning of property located at 10285 Ridge Road from Agricultural One to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development.
Thank you. I forgot the, or are you?
I forgot the case number. Sorry. WZ 2502.
Perfect. Thank you. I forgot to say, we're now opening the public hearing. Staff presentation, please.
Yes. For the record, I'm Stephanie Stevens, planner in the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number WZ 2502, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development at 10285 Ridge Road. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The site is located on the north side of Ridge Road, west of Miller Street and south of 54th Avenue, and is approximately 10.89 acres in size. It currently contains several unoccupied buildings from when it functioned as part of a much larger 68-acre group home campus for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, originally owned and operated by the Colorado Department of Human Services. The remaining buildings on the site are currently undergoing remediation through the state and will eventually be demolished. The property is surrounded by a wide range of land uses and zoning designations with lower-density residential to the north and west, transit-supportive residential to the south, and commercial-institutional to the east. The site is currently zoned Agricultural One and is well situated to serve as a transition between the surrounding properties. Adjacent properties to the north are zoned Planned Unit Development in Arvada. To the west, properties are zoned Planned Residential Development in Wheat Ridge. To the south is Planned Industrial Development in Wheat Ridge, including, and it includes the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant. And to the east is the Wheat Ridge Regional Center, which is operated by the Colorado Department of Human Services. The redevelopment site surrounds the regional center site on three sides. And the regional center site would remain under state ownership and zoned Agricultural One and is not a part of this application. Further, further to the east is the Arvada Red Rocks Community College Campus, zoned mixed-use transit in Arvada. The current agricultural zoning allows for government facilities or one single unit home and accessory structures with up to 25% building coverage and 35-foot height. The state of Colorado recently sold the property over to Jefferson County Regional Housing or Foothills Regional Housing under the condition that it be developed primarily as an affordable housing site with secondary community services. Foothills' intent is to redevelop the site as a mixed-use property with a range of affordable housing types as well as educational facilities, including the expansion of the Red Rocks Community College office and community-supporting commercial uses. This is a view from the subject property looking southwest from 54th Avenue, from the west side of the property, showing the vacant group home building soon to be demolished. While governmental facilities are permitted under the current agricultural zoning, the existing group homes do not conform to the development standards since they were built prior to the adoption of the city's zoning ordinance. Due to the longstanding vacancies of these buildings, they are degrading to the point where it's causing a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community. Rezoning of the site is necessary to bring the site into conformance with our zoning and facilitate redevelopment that improves the overall quality of life in this area. So just a few more pictures to give you some context. This is a view from 54th and Miller intersection. Again, looking south at those group home buildings. And this is a view looking north of the existing regional center access point, which would remain. And then from that same access point, looking south on Miller Street from the regional center. And the next one is at the intersection of Ridge and Miller, looking north. The train tracks are just south of this photo. And lastly, in terms of photos, here's the view looking north from Ridge at the west side of the property. This portion of the property is primarily vacant currently. So the applicant is requesting the zone change to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development, or MUC TOD, in order to develop the site as a mixed-use property. This proposal not only responds to the housing needs of the community, but these uses are inherently transit-oriented since affordable housing is known to have low parking demands and needs to be located near transit centers to serve these populations. The demographics associated with the Community College Nursing Program and Health Service uses also show high populations that use transit. So if approved, the rezoning of this property would enable the opportunity to increase transit ridership, add to the employment base while revitalizing a dilapidated site that's in need of investment. The applicant believes their proposal aligns with the city's adopted plans, goals, policies for the TOD area. Because the site is over 10 acres, a concept plan is also required and is typically reviewed after a rezoning is approved by staff. Because this infill site will impact surrounding properties, the proposed concept plan is being reviewed in conjunction with the rezoning and is currently under review. The proposed concept plan limits what would be allowed and provides more certainty on density and uses. It shows the primary use of the site as residential with up to 200 affordable units, including a mix of housing types such as townhomes, apartments, and age-restricted apartments on the western portion of the site. In addition, the plan indicates the Red Rocks Community College building, expansion of their nursing program on the northeast corner, a supportive services building such as a community health center at the southeast corner, and an office or maintenance building for the housing units and grounds internal to the site on the north side. While MUC TOD zoning would allow for a more expansive list of uses of unlimited height and density since the subject property is part of an urban renewal area and part of the voter-approved area exempt from charter's height and density limits, the concept plan will place further restrictions, including those limitations on density and height, and even lower heights along the north portion of the site where adjacent to low-density residential. The use and intensity of the proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses by incorporating context-sensitive restrictions such as landscape buffers, open space, lower heights, and architectural standards that respect adjacent development. So quickly go through a table with you that compares the existing Agricultural One and the proposed MUC TOD zoning in the middle column there along with the concept plan limitations to the far right. The concept plan self-imposes more limited uses and building heights with a maximum of two to three stories along 54th Avenue and four stories everywhere else. And the zoning requires high-quality architecture. And it also encourages adequate setbacks from nearby residential. So for example, on the side of the site, while, while it's a zero-foot setback requirement that you see, there's actually a drainage buffer to the west and a drive aisle. So they would, it would land 60 to 160 feet from the property line on that west side. So it also encourages those adequate setbacks from nearby residential and supports design-oriented to activate surrounding streets while expanding the Red Rocks Community College campus and introduces potential for community services. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on August 20th, 2025 with 41 people in attendance from the neighborhood. And those notes are included in your staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is served by special districts, we sent the application on referral to outs, to service agencies as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or agencies. And before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a 1,000-foot radius. And the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. No comments were received in advance of the hearing. Staff reviews zone change requests based on several criteria, one of the main ones being consistency with the adopted plans and policies. The proposed housing options and mix of uses near a transit station directly support the city plan core values of serving a mix of incomes and inclusiveness. It also aligns with the desired outcome of peaceful coexistence by thoughtfully applying and calibrating form and use tools based on the features of adjacent properties. The city plan identifies this site as a transit village place type. Transit village is defined as a compact, walkable district centered around the rail station that supports high-density residential development and convenient access to neighborhood-serving commercial amenities. The transit village is intended to promote transit use, reduce dependence on personal vehicles, and foster a vibrant mixed-use environment where daily needs can be met within walking distance. MUC TOD zoning is appropriate because of the designation in the city plan, the proximity to the rail stations, and variety of land uses in the area. The proposed concept plan responds to form and design recommendations. As I mentioned, it incorporates those height restrictions, build-to, and setbacks that match those surrounding with more restrictive heights and greater setbacks and buffers where adjacent to low-density residential to the north and west. Form requirements avoid imposition of additional height on adjacent properties. Appropriate screening and buffering are included, and parking needs are addressed onsite. Finally, the city plan includes an implementation strategy to support housing development to meet community goals. And in January 2023, the City Council also adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan. That's a guiding document that addresses housing affordability in Wheat Ridge. And that plan identified a need for multi-unit rental and owner opportunities where possible to achieve inclusionary mixed-use, mixed-income outcomes. The site was slated for affordable housing development when it was sold to Foothills Regional Housing. The proposed zone change directly responds to the goals identified in the Affordable Housing Strategy as well as the city plan. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. The proposed zoning contributes to housing needs of the community, supports a mix of housing and services near transit, provides a unique and context-sensitive design that takes into consideration surrounding area and uses, improves public utility infrastructure by upgrading utilities, and advances public improvements which are significant along the roadways. The proposed zoning complies with safety and access requirements of the fire districts and servicing requirements of utility districts. The development will likely add value to the area through high-quality design and redevelopment of a vacant, under-utilized, utilized site and is consistent with the goals and objectives of plans and policies. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to City Council, who will be the final reviewer of the request. And if City Council approves, then the zone change is approved. And that concludes my presentation. And the applicant is here with one also. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. As usual, great job. Thanks. And the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. My name is Marcus Pockner. I apologize, I have a cold tonight, so I'm going to work through it. I'm honored to present to all of you. I'm a land use and community outreach consultant on behalf of Foothills Regional Housing. I also want to echo your comment. That was a wonderful staff presentation. And we have had a great relationship with both Stephanie and Jana throughout this process and throughout our neighborhood integration. Next slide. Our team, we're coming back up. I think we can go back one more slide, please. This is the team that I am representing here tonight. Foothills Regional Housing, the Pockner Company, which is our company, does land use and community outreach, and then also Design Concepts. Design Concepts is our planner on this site. We have all done what we call integrated, community-based planning on this site with the surrounding neighborhoods. And we're honored to help share this vision tonight. Next slide. This is the project location. You all have heard all about it. The capital C here, the site that is surrounded. One thing you'll note in this context is just how different it is on almost every edge. It is a terrific property. It has the opportunity to be a buffer, to transition to single-family, and really embrace both transit and educational opportunities that surround the site. Next slide, please. This is that very important project history. It is a unique project history. And it actually talks about the disposition, our purchase, and the use. It goes through that property. These have now been, buildings have been abandoned for over 30 years. We did the redevelopment of Lowry Air Force Base. These are in much worse condition and need to be demolished. And we are going through that process right now. The community has been very supportive of this process. In nineteen, in as early as 2021, the state started identifying this as a surplus property that may be an ideal property for affordable housing-type uses. They look across their assets and they identify this property. In 2024, following a selection process, Foothills Regional Housing was selected and actually purchased and closed this site to build affordable housing. We're very clear and transparent about that. We believe it's a remarkable opportunity to bring in affordable housing. And as we've all talked about, we are now doing site remediation to bring those buildings, demolish that, and really bring it into today's standards. Next slide. This is, on behalf of Foothills Regional Housing, who they are. They are a remarkable community partner. They are the housing authority for Jefferson County. They now take care of about 3,000 households in this county. They work in different, they have 27 apartment buildings. And as you can see there, one thing we have stressed throughout this is we want to locate housing near transit, near groceries, employment, and we absolutely do not want to concentrate poverty. We want to have neighborhoods that transition into existing housing stock. Next slide. This gives a little bit about who we serve, right? The people that are there. There's two charts here that show the maximum rents and that corresponding income limits. We always think it's important that the community understands the level of AMI, AMI, the percentage that people make, the area median income. As you can see, we've highlighted the 60%. Yes, we will have a range of AMI at this site, but it'll average around 60%. You can see what that means, and the income limits that correspond to a one-person or two-person household. You also see half of our people are children, a third are elderly, and nearly a half identify as female. So it really gives a balance to the community and who will be moving into the site. Next slide. This is also real jobs and real people. These are salaries that correspond to those income limits. We are going to bring police officers, teachers, firefighters, and that last one there, nurse, we brought that forward because we are bringing forward a partnership with Red Rocks Community College for a nursing school. We're going to house and educate our future workforce and really bring that element to the community as well. Next slide. Site context, just briefly, I'll go through these. Again, if we go to the next slide, you really do see the edges here, the difference of how important it is, both Arvada and Wheat Ridge, to see the uses, the transit and industrial to the south, all that transit line just to the southeast of this site, then transitioning kind of up the hill to the surrounding single-family neighborhood context. Next slide. We always look at the guiding documents and community feedback. Those are the foundation of how we do our planning. So we're going to talk just briefly about each of those elements. Next slide. Of course, you know your comprehensive plan and your code, the guidance that we have received. We spent a lot of time looking at what the plan has here in the next slide to move this project forward. We started first with that existing context. It's important to know both the Arvada and Wheat Ridge zoning to really show the context, that project site. This has always been a state facility. So frankly, we're zoning it for the first time in a municipal district and really bringing that forward to the community. Next slide. This is the Arvada and Wheat Ridge zoning. You see that transition from the Arvada station apartments, all mixed-use, all TOD. We become the transition and buffer site that then transitions away from Red Rocks and into the single-family neighborhood. Next slide. As was noted by Stephanie, we're the top of the map right there. A transit village, a village is exactly what we want to bring forward. As you see on the next slide, that image that really shows the type of transit-oriented development that is very walkable, scaled, gentle density that comes across the site and really meets the neighborhood where it is at today. Next slide. Our proposed zoning, we are requesting MUC TOD. That is our request because it is in full MUC TOD. That is our request because it is in full consistency with your underlying plan. We are on a commercial corridor and we are bringing forward these residential units that were designed and envisioned along a transit line. We are being very clear with the community. We are not pursuing the maximum density or height on this site because we want to have that transition. This is approximately 200 units that will be built across the site and a substantial extension for the Red Rocks Community College for that nursing program. Next slide. Our community outreach, the second part of that foundation, we use something called concentric outreach philosophy where we work with the most adjacent neighbors and go out from there. So we did three voluntary meetings here before we had the city meeting because we think it is so imperative to hear from them and integrate their comments into our plan. So we have met with 150-plus people. We have had about 15 follow-ups. We continue to engage with them and will as we move through the site plan process. Next slide. This shows our philosophy of how we do it. We actually break up the neighborhood because the issues, as you see on the focus group to the north or the west, are very different. How you address the site on 54th, how you live on the west, what the homes actually facing to the west, with the natural area behind them. We heard different things and we wanted them to ask questions about their own neighborhood and their design elements. We actually did a very integrated charrette-based kind of plan meeting with them where we got direct feedback from all of them. That led then to the required August meeting, the collective neighborhood meeting. Next slide. These are actually results, data that we heard back from people. So on the left are the questions that we would ask, and these reflect the answers. These answers are embedded in both our zoning and the conceptual site plan that are before you. So we heard about who needs the housing, the types of housing. As you will see and you saw on the concept plan, generally lower heights on the northern site, transition with a little more height, cap it at four stories, and really have that landscaping transition. Many people universally said partner with Red Rocks Community College. We are bringing that element in and also service providers. Next slide. This shows how we did dotocracy or just sticky notes where people could write anonymously, what were the challenges and opportunities. But look at those opportunities, to have senior and student housing, we will have that, to have parks and open space, partnership with Red Rocks. These are living comments that came from that. People also said, give us the appropriate density, really reflect the neighborhood and our property values, and we are doing those things with the housing that we will build in the future on this site. Next slide. This is our concept plan. It was gone through in great detail, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of elements. How important it is, we think, to address 54th. So on the north side of this, we're showing a two-story product, which is exactly the same that's on the north side of 54th, right? So really embracing them there. There's a green space there. Red Rocks pulling across Miller Street where there's that natural connection to them. They'll be able to walk across, park there, really utilize that facility. And then with a substantial setback on our, to our western neighbors, that's where, as we go south, having a little more density, honoring the setback from that Wheat Ridge facility that will stay in place, the state facility there, and really creating a complete community that is not over, doesn't have much height, two to four stories, and appropriate density for the entire neighborhood. Next slide. This probably says everything. We have senior housing, family housing, the community college expansion, those lower heights, and we're building into the density. This slide so far to the south, we really get the opportunity, that four stories, the site falls off so much you're able to build into that. Probably as important in that village image that we're all thinking of is this needs, it needs improvements. It needs infrastructure. It needs to be knitted into the fabric of the community. It's an unfinished site that you go by today and wonder what happened there. We will bring it in with pedestrian, roadway connections, and really make it part of the existing community. Next slide. Folks, I'll just transition here to the approval criteria. We are, believe that we're in full compliance with your approval criteria, certainly promoting the public health and safety, adequate infrastructure. Again, no comments back from the referral agency, no negative comments on that. And then we just want to point out at least one of the following. This is remarkable to be able to meet your comprehensive plan, to also reflect a change in the neighborhood, which is the entire advent of the TOD. This has been zoned for 30 years, but to think of the change that's happened in this neighborhood character, and then to address an unmet community need of both affordable housing and expanding educational facilities. So we're honored to present this. We look forward to any questions or comments that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. I will now open the hearing for public comments. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Thank you, Jana. Erica, excuse me, Erica Hillis, would you come to the podium? Spell your last name and your address, and the floor is yours.
Indeed. My name is Erica Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. I am here in support of the rezoning. We're discussing today for the Foothills Housing Authority. I am-
Can I get your address, please?
6230 West Alamo Drive, Denver, Colorado 80123. My apologies. As I said, my name was Erica Hollis. I am Senior Vice President and Chief of Staff at Red Rocks Community College, so I'm here speaking on behalf of the college in support of this proposal. And thank you for allowing us to speak today. We appreciate being invited into this process by both Foothills Housing Authority and the planning group today. I'm here to speak in strong support of this rezoning application at Ridge Road. This site is adjacent to our Arvada campus, and if this site is rezoned through this process, the northeast corner of the site will be the future home of our campus expansion to house a new nursing building. Red Rocks Community College, as you may know, has two campuses, both located in Jefferson County, one in Lakewood and one in Arvada, and if this goes well, Wheat Ridge as well. Our programs are designed to transform lives and strengthen communities, and we serve 12,000 students a year right now. Red Rocks Campus in Arvada has our health campus. It's our health campus that has programs such as sonography, rad tech, radiology, technology, nursing, medical assistant, medical billing and coding, phlebotomy, and the only master levels program that is offered at any community college in the country, our physician assistant program. These growing programs provide much-needed degree programs in support of healthcare providers and workers. Recognizing a need to address the state's healthcare workforce shortage, Governor Polis has partnered with state colleges to increase nursing education pathways and funding for institutions that decide to provide these critical programs. As a result, we received a $1 million grant approximately 18 months ago to fund our development of a registered nursing program. So our nursing program is actually, as a registered nursing program, is new. We expect soon to offer also a Bachelor of Nursing program in the coming years, but at full enrollment for our registered nursing program, which is an AA degree. Our current registered nursing program will require a new facility. It is crucial to be able to expand our campus to provide additional opportunities for nursing students in the area. These much-needed educational opportunities will facilitate high-quality jobs for area young people and serve the greater community. This zoning application facilitates our ability to grow our campus and its critical nursing program in close proximity to our current health campus site. We also greatly value the opportunity to have housing options available to our students and graduates near our classrooms, including, as well as transit. We believe these uses are entirely compatible and complementary to the neighborhood. As a neighbor and future user on the site, we believe this zoning betters the health, safety, and welfare of the community and aligns with Wheat Ridge's planning documents. We ask for your support of this application tonight. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom to speak?
There are two people. If you wish to speak, can you please raise your hand? Nobody at this time?
Thank you. Nobody else left to speak? I will close the citizens forum and would entertain questions from the commission. Commissioner Disney?
This is for the lady from Red Rocks. Is the expansion just for housing, or will there be classrooms and facilities for the students that way, or is it merely housing?
No, it is not housing. We actually are not a residential campus. So the facility would be entirely classrooms and clinical facilities, not actually patients coming in, but sort of that clinical training facilities-
Okay.
-and laboratories.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Chairman. Just piling on about the question about the training facilities, how does that work in terms of, do you lease that space then from Foothills?
The way we have initially envisioned this is actually, we'd probably sell that site to Foothill, so it allows for an expansion. That's why we actually wanted to show it on the concept. So you are correct, that's how we would work there. They'd be able to expand that, really embrace from a pedestrian connection, some civic space there as well to have that. And to answer the earlier question, my comment about providing housing, that's something that Foothills would do, nurses that in the income levels when they start could also live in our units, that would be on our housing side, then also to have the educational opportunity for a nursing school. We just think it's a really great opportunity. Those are the residents, the type of people that we will have at our site.
Great, thank you. Don't go too far, though. I have another question.
No problem, I'm right here.
So I wanted to ask a question about the housing. You talked about the senior housing. I love the mix. Would the senior housing be age-restricted then?
It would be, and by definition, that is an age-restricted product that happens for senior housing. What you see on a lot of these sites and why we talk about 200 units is actually to finance each one of those buildings. You go through a financing project for each one separately, right? So the senior housing, the programs that we would go through are age-restricted, have certain restrictions that go through in the programs. So yes, it would be standalone senior housing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And the AMI chart you showed, that was super helpful. Thank you for that. I'm just curious if that was a Jeffco AMI or if that was a different?
Yeah, that is based on a Jeffco AMI. It actually updates annually for each county, and so we correspond, our rents would adjust on an annual basis, right? I know FRH knows how to do that very well. You see that happen, and then we would have a mix of AMIs, but our target rate is to have an average of 60% across the site.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Super curious about the transit-oriented development aspect of it. I love that. My only hesitation is getting across Ridge Road. Can you talk about how you thought about that with the development of the site?
Yeah, and we'll continue to work with both cities, right, on that crossing. We think it's really important. The one thing I will note is that site, just the way it is today, really does not have infrastructure. It doesn't have sidewalk fabric, so there's not natural crossings because I think in a lot of ways, the infrastructure isn't there. So I think in a site plan, there are opportunities to make a more dedicated crossing there, really to work on that. As you know, to the Arvada station, as you move a little bit east of there, there's a little bit more dedicated. So we think it's going to come into that. We'll have a setback from that. We'll also have some roadways where we can make a turn lane, not to interrupt the flow of traffic on Ridge Road. So I think we'll find that pedestrian. That's the next step for sure. The one thing we will say, as we look at our transit or our affordable housing residents, they are much more likely to use transit. We do surveys, we do analysis of that. It's a population that absolutely uses transit, so we want to have that same priority. So that's probably in the next steps as we go into that site plan, but we absolutely want to bring that into the site.
Yeah, I'd love to see more work done on that, just to encourage safe crossing. I also noticed, you know, a lot of, it seems like at the edge of 54th Avenue, it's going to be just outside of that half-mile TOD. Is that your estimation as well?
I think that's, we're just inside the half-mile, all of that, so it's right. It is, meets the standards there. We'll still meet all the parking requirements and all of that. I think it's a kind of a balanced site, right? And I think the one thing that we found, the reason we're doing that, and really where you see our gentle density, the two-story and four-story, we think that's the right mix. It's probably some transit, certainly, and some vehicles, but we want to find that right where it's not too impactful to the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you. That's all.
Sure.
Commissioner Gray?
Thank you. I just want to clarify a couple of follow-ups to Commissioner Holt's question. Did you say that you anticipate Foothills selling that section to Red Rocks?
That is correct. Yes.
And then on the AMI chart, is it fair to say then, just out of curiosity, that I think the range on there was 30 to 80?
Sure.
And will, will the site then contain housing for, you know, throughout that range, and it will average out to 60, but there will be for 30 and there will be up to 80, at least that's what you-
That's exactly right. There will be a range of AMI across the entire site. Our target range, or target average, I'm so sorry, is 60% AMI. So there will be a range. You certainly see that to the fellow commissioners' question about senior housing. A lot of times, senior housing is a lower AMI as there's not as much income coming in. So that's where you really see the diversification come in. But we'll have family housing units, maybe a two-story, like a townhome-type product on the northern side, and then that senior housing as well. So we'll have a full mix of AMI across the site.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
Sure.
Commissioner Kinos?
No questions from me.
Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, really, you've answered most of my questions in answering most of these, but I did want to say that I appreciate the investment in the area, and particularly the investment that will create additional housing and most particularly affordable housing. And my question, the remaining one, is this intended to be, or do we even know at this point, if it's a mix of for-rent and for-sale properties?
Yeah, I'm looking to my left here. I think predominantly a for-rent product, right? We are looking if there are opportunities on that two-story. Perhaps there's for-sale. You're seeing that start to happen in affordable housing. To do that, more deed-restricted, but for right now, we're looking at probably more of a for-rent product.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the community outreach you guys have done. I think that speaks loudly to the integrity of the project. We mentioned a little bit of the elephant in the room, some parking. Can you refresh me on the TOD parking requirements? Maybe that's more of a question for-
I'm happy to defer on that, absolutely.
Yeah. I'm that guy. I'm the parking guy, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And multi-unit is actually exempt from parking requirements now in mixed-use zone districts, so it would be solidly based on minimums for like the educational office, retail, any of that kind of portion that would come in. So we'd be looking to the market to give us a parking study when they come in for site planning that tells us how much parking they need, and that's how much parking they would need to provide.
And to expand, are you, have you done a study, or is that in there? Because I know the parking stuff is a hot topic.
Yeah, the great thing about having a client like FRH that does so many, we have 27 different developments, right? So we do a thorough analysis probably of a new construction type and the housing that's there. We studied at daytime and nighttime parking, so we'll meet that ratio to, I think, respond to what you're getting at. We want to park adequately at this site as well, right? These are our residents. We have the same shared interest of providing that. It's also, though, providing that balance to really encourage transit use, right? So we're going to park that. There's different uses or different parking levels, as you know, for senior housing. So each one of those buildings, we'll go through a different process there.
Perfect. And we probably don't have anyone here to answer this, and it's just binged in my head-
Sure.
-when you said transit. There's not a whole lot, I know there's not a bus that goes up and down Ridge, I don't believe. And we got the light rail over there, and that's kind of a hub for kipling and whatnot. What serves, as far as like RTD or public transportation, the Red Rocks now, and how's that going to look for transit, since we're calling it transit-oriented development? I got to say, I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and this is a really cool site, but I think that's a question we ought to ask.
So we may, I'm looking out to the team here. We may owe you a little bit more follow-up on that. I think the partnership with Red Rocks, part of that should be on how we, the parking in the future, right, for that expanded footprint there, and also getting students in and out of that site, right? So we're going to owe you on that. I think we have a shared, one of our ethos for FRH is to be near-transit sites, right? So we want that to work. We use programs that would encourage that, so I think it's finding that mix. So I'm not giving you a full answer because we're going to, as we study that, the one thing that I will note to all of the questions about how we make that transition is, we have a pretty good idea of where the senior housing building will be, where the family housing building will be, but we got to finalize that mix, right, in that site plan, and that will determine a lot of it. What we heard from the neighbors, and we actually showed images of type of landscaping, types of transition, they literally would go to pictures. So we've thought a lot about the edges of the site and how that blends into the neighborhood. Now it probably comes back to focusing on the public transportation and moving people in and out.
Great. And one final weirdo question, since you, and this is probably more of a Stephanie question. Are we going to be back here for a subdivision when we sell, when the property sells, and that'll be different than a TOD or-
It would not actually. Subdivisions, unless they have variances attached to them or waivers- Subdivisions, unless they have variances attached to them or waivers, they don't come to planning commissioner city council anymore. They're all ministerial and staff administrative.
Perfect.
So, and as well as site planning, sorry to add. So that all goes admin if this zoning gets approved.
Great, thanks. I probably knew that, but forgot. Appreciate it. Well, thanks, Ed. Any more questions from commission? Commissioner Gravy?
I thought of one more on the Foothills side. Just when you were talking about all of the, you know, types of professionals that would utilize this type of housing, I think it's a really important graphic, but I'm just curious if you have any data or information on the demand as it sits right now? If you build something like this, you know, what's the likelihood, let's just say, of you have a nursing student who's in that school, like, is it actually realistic that, I mean, or is the demand so big right now that they would kind of get in line, so to speak, or how does that work?
Sure. So as a representative of FRH, I can assure you, they could probably give you very specific numbers. I guarantee they have a remarkable waitlist. I will tell you, just working on affordable housing all across Colorado, there is a shocking waitlist, particularly for senior affordable housing. It is, the state demographer says we need more senior affordable housing than any housing typology in Colorado, and we have to provide that. But they have so many community members that are on lists for all of that. And I would note, sir, as you bring in new product and new neighborhoods and new serving, just the people that want to move into that even from other communities. So this is more-than-needed housing typology. You all have a housing plan to try to get in your housing needs assessment to bring that in. People cannot wait for this housing, there is no question about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. No more questions? Commissioner Woods, I will entertain a motion.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ2502, a request for approval of a zone change from agricultural one to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development for a mixed-use affordable housing project at 10285 Ridge Road for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's adopted plans and policies. Four, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. Five, the zone change will further enable the goals for the TOD area to be met. And six, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request. Thank you.
And the motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion from the commission? Mr. Disney?
I think I'm mostly dismayed to find out that people making $78,000 a year are considered low income. That blows my mind. I just was not aware that, and I've served on a task force for affordable housing, and they always talked about AMI, but there never were any numbers associated salary-wise. And in our discussions, this type of housing was considered the missing middle. And I've been helping a gentleman that's campaigning for city council, and we've, I've had conversations with people about affordable housing, and I try to explain to them that teachers, doctors, excuse me, teachers, nurses, cops, firemen, the people that work in Wheat Ridge can't afford to live in Wheat Ridge because the houses are so expensive. So I'm really excited to see this project. I know that Foothills has a great product, and your presentation was fantastic, and thank you for the education, and I hope that people understand that when we say affordable housing, we just literally mean housing for people. Bottom line, we've got to have it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to pile on and say, I'm also extremely thrilled that the city is able to bring this sort of affordable housing, or housing for the people, through this project. So thank you for all your work on it, and look forward to seeing the next steps.
Commissioner Gravy?
I just have a quick comment. I think this is a really, it's a very interesting case, and what a great opportunity to partner with Red Rocks and to, you know, make use of the opportunity for transit-oriented development, particularly along a light rail line. As, you know, in Wheat Ridge, there's just not, it's not, it doesn't go through like the center of Wheat Ridge, so the fact that we're able to contribute to, you know, potential increased ridership and use of that service, and it's, it's a, you know, seems that it's going to be, you know, appreciated, and as was said in the presentation, you know, blended in with the community quite well with regard to the fact that the heightened density is much lower than what's allowed in that zoning, and so this particular project seems like a really excellent fit, and so it was a really interesting presentation. I appreciate it hearing it.
Commissioner Canones?
Absolutely. I will say, having a little bit of background in real estate, it's refreshing to see the city actually take these steps in moving forward to provide housing for the average person, not just the people that are just doing really well financially. So I hope this is one of many. It's really encouraging. Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
You know, I really, I really have no additional comments, other than to just ditto everything that's been said and say thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to say thanks for the presentations, and I hope, you know, I know some folks in the audience here who live just outside the little circle of what you were going to, you know, what you interviewed, and I hope your presentation brought some calmness and some clarity to what's happening there. I think it's really cool that we're going to, you know, have the nursing facility. I know I, we need a lot of those for the training and then the senior housing. Unfortunately, myself and my friends are approaching that strange age, and now hopefully maybe we can fit into that and not have to move out of Wheat Ridge, but I appreciate everything that you've had. If there are no other questions or comments, I can have a vote of the commission, please.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. We have no more public hearings. So we'll move on to old business, Jana?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't have any old business.
Any new business?
Yeah, yes. So far, we've got two dates scheduled. Sorry, was that, oh, okay. Thought you were signaling me. We have two dates for planning commission in November, including the 6th and the 20th. However, as of right now, we do not have any cases planned for either of those dates. So we will keep you posted, but I don't think, at least for the 6th, that we will have anything, and the 20th is still to come, but so far, nothing. Let's see here, project and development updates. We had the Hampton Inn ribbon cutting that occurred last week, so they are now open. The Hampton Inn, Hampton Inn at Clear Creek Crossing, sorry, I'll be more, speak into my mic more. Yes, there's a little bit of background noise. And then also the lookout at Clear Creek Crossing, the restaurants that you all looked at. The groundbreaking was this week, so those are moving full steam ahead.
I thought it was interesting when they did their presentation for us to vote on. They said they wanted to have their grand opening timed for Oktoberfest, and I was like, that's very optimistic.
Those are all of my updates.
That's all, that's all of yours? All right. Thank you so much. Is there any updates from the commissioners? Mr. Woods?
I have nothing.
Great. Mr. Canones? Mr. Gravy?
I just wanted to ask, is there a potential meeting again this month on the 30th? No?
Nope. That would be the fifth week, and so.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yep. You're off that day.
Great. Get ready for Halloween.
Commissioner Hollis? Mr. Disney? Mr. Moore? I don't have anything either. It's been, staff just does a great job, I want to say, of preparing everything, and well, I didn't realize you could listen, you have, this is your second time you've given that, because you had to do it for Wheat Ridge Speaks. I, listen, I didn't even know it was on there until I kind of dove down.
Yes, it is. They were recording, and we have to follow it pretty closely.
Really well. Thank you very much. That's all. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of going home?
Motion approved, seven to zero.